Just bear with me, I'm not using my normal computer, so I'm gonna log into things a little bit.
Take your time, do it right. I have trouble setting up tonight myself, so I'm surprised I made it in on time.
I can hear you through these. Don't remember my sign and I'm having a senior moment here and I can't post this.
You just trying to share a screen with something?
I'm trying to get the YouTube all set up here, bear with me.
Then take your time.
Well, I have the record function on, I can get this downloaded. When I go to, when I'm at the office at my usual computer tomorrow, I don't know why this isn't working, but I can download it tomorrow, so we're not gonna worry about that. So alrighty, you are up and running.
Thank you, let me go off of that temporary unmute. Okay. Call to order this session of the Thomaston Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, Stacy, can you just go through and do the roll? Call for attendance here.
Yes, we have Chairman Finer.
Present.
And we have our Vice Chairman. Okay, that's Tony Semela, and we have Laura Fitch.
Present.
And we have Alternates Sue Pierpont.
Present.
And Michelle Valovski.
Present.
And I believe that's everybody.
Okay, that's members and officers to constitute quorum. So the sessions ago. And
Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
No, I was just waiting for you to go there. So we got the call to order. We've got the annual meeting. So nomination and election of officers. Is anybody interested in any particular position? Otherwise, I'm open, I'm open to anybody nominating themselves, but otherwise would somebody interested in making a motion to nominate the existing slate?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to nominate the current slate of officers for their existing positions for another term.
And Tony, that was you?
Yep.
Okay, just if I could ask everybody, gentle reminder to please identify yourself when you're making a motion.
Oh, I see, okay.
Laura, I second.
And we have Claude now too.
Yes, just gonna say let it be noted that Claude joined. Claude, did you hear the motion in the, in the second?
I think he's still getting set up.
Yeah, I'll do him the courtesy of just hanging a second. You don't normally run into these long delays between motions and votes. In-person meetings, huh?
Yeah, I'm not using the normal computer that I normally use to do the, it's a different laptop and I'm having challenges getting everything set up on it. We're Hi Claude, we do see you, but you are muted, so we're gonna need you to unmute yourself in the bottom left-hand corner.
If you move the cursor, then you'll be able to see it.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
I had a tough time getting in here today.
Okay, we saw you joining in, just to let you know that we have a motion and a second on the table to elect the existing slate of officers for the commission. Any discussion? All in favor, and Stacy, go through and do a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Chairman Finer.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Semela.
Aye.
Laura Fitch.
Aye.
Claude Misery.
Aye.
Michelle Valovski.
Aye.
And Sue Pierpont.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, then review the standing Conservation Subcommittee reappointments.
Chairman is Laura Fitch.
Correct, Laura, Laura, would you like to, yeah, run the nominating session?
If somebody else is interested, that's fine, otherwise I'll continue.
Do we have a motion to have the existing slate of officers for the Conservation Commission Subcommittee?
This is Tony Semela, so moved.
Laura Fitch, second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Stacy going through and doing a roll call again, please.
Sure, Chairman Finer.
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Semela.
Aye.
And Laura Fitch.
Aye.
And Claude Misery.
Aye.
Michelle Valovski.
Aye.
And Sue Pierpont.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, review the Commission bylaws for possible revisions, I believe Stacy, you're up.
Okay. So I did go through and by and large, I think we're all set, but there was an interesting question that came up in light of our quorum issue last month and our concern earlier about whether or not we'd have quorum for tonight. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention in here. I have it up right now, it's section 15 of your bylaws. "A minimum of three of the regular five members of the commission, one of whom must be an elected officer of the commission, shall constitute a quorum." Pat, not having had this as an issue for us before, I ran it by Pat and Pat said she was under the impression that we had been operating off of a quorum off of seven people, meaning that would then be the number four. So I just wanted to clarify what was the intention and make sure where we have to say and what it needs to say.
Right, so from my understanding, quorum will change depending on the number of members present. But this was put in so that there had to be at least three members present in the meeting in order to have a vote. So, you know, technically you could have two people show up and be able, you know, be able to have a vote. And the Commission in the past, yeah.
We wouldn't be able to.
You wouldn't be able, well, you wouldn't be able to open the meeting, right? So in, in a large part, this also has to do with making sure that there's at least this number of people as written available to do annual meetings and make changes of, you know, in the Commission or the bylaws or anything else.
Okay, so just for, just for clarity. So we are sticking with what it says here in terms of of the five regular members, a minimum of three has to be present.
Correct.
Or
Including one officer.
Yes, including the one officer, okay, so it is not off of the total membership of the commission, which is seven people.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess it's all, it's also possible you can have a full commission and then have somebody abstain for whatever reason. So
Okay.
Again, this was put in a few years ago, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, and I'm totally fine with it, the question came up because I knew it said this. But then Pat was like, I thought we've had meetings before when there were four people. So that's why I was like, okay, well, that's not what the bylaw said, and I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Okay, any comment discussion from anyone else? On the Commission?
No, I think the intention was for, like you said, three of the five regular, it was based on three, so a minimum of three plus one. Went off.
Right, part, part of the problem too is coming back to me is that you can't seat an alternate unless you have a meeting. So it would take at least three members to have the meeting, and then you can see as many alternates as you chose.
Okay.
As available.
But that doesn't, but we, we have three officers and two non-officer regular members, so
Correct.
There couldn't be three non-officers there, right, or am I not following?
No, 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 you're following, what I'm suggesting, you, you could have, it's possible to have up to four, four alternates that we've had, you know, potentially in the past. So it's possible that four alternates can show up, but because they couldn't be seated, they really couldn't start a meeting anyway.
Well, just for clarity. The membership is, I believe, five regular, two alternates now, I think it's been set.
Right.
So that wouldn't happen, but yeah, no.
I would just give you the history of it, right?
Gotcha, okay. So, I mean, that was my only question, I mean, there's a couple of minor typos, but other than that, I didn't see anything.
Right, typos are administrative issues that you could just make on the fly, there's no need, need to vote on them.
Yeah, so I didn't see anything, anything else that was in need of an update or anything.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue on with the, you know, I guess the certify that we did the annual review of the bylaws and no changes will be made?
This is Tony Semela, so moved.
Laura Fitch, I will second.
Further discussion? Again, Stacy, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Sure, Chairman Finer.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Semela.
Aye.
Laura Fitch.
Aye.
And Claude Misery.
Aye.
And Sue Pierpont.
Aye.
And Michelle Valovski.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Let me get you to your next item.
The minutes.
There we go.
Has everybody had the opportunity to read the minutes ahead of time, or would you like a slow scroll? That wasn't easy to say either, at least for me.
It wasn't a big, long set of minutes, it was pretty quick.
Right. So whenever anybody's ready to make a motion on them, please do.
Laura Fitch, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting of December 16th, 2020 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Once again, Stacy?
Sure, Chairman Finer.
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Semela.
Aye.
Laura Fitch.
Aye.
And Claude Misery.
Aye.
And Michelle Valovski.
Aye.
And Sue Pierpont.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
We have another minute, there were no minutes from last month.
No, because it was not a, a meeting, the only thing I filed was a simple note that we did not have quorum.
Correct. And we'll, just to bring it up again, so that it's on this record again, there was no, no meeting due to lack of quorum last, last month, so there are no minutes. Now that's in these minutes. Okay. Nothing in the way of old business?
No.
Nothing came up, okay. And I'm assuming you're calling up new business?
Yes. Okay. Attached are hang on one second, okay. You may recall, it's about two, three months ago now, I had mentioned some minor updates to the wetlands regulations in order to align with our stormwater permit. And so this is what this is, anything I added in is in red, so obviously we added Michelle Valovski. And, oh, it's off for some reason. So some possible additions mainly are, are the ones in red. Low impact development definition means a site design strategy intended to maintain or replicate pre-development hydrology through the use of small-scale controls integrated throughout the site to manage runoff as close to its source as possible.
Just the definition, correct?
There's a definition.
No, I mean, that, that is the definition, right?
Yes.
Right. So I'm guessing it's going to be used later.
Yeah. You spoiled the surprise. Okay, here we go, in section seven, application requirements. 7.5F Alternatives Including LID Practices Which Would Cause Less Or No Environmental Impact To Wetlands Or Watercourses And Why The Alternatives As Set Fourth In The Application Was Chosen. So we are adding that into, "requirements for all applications shall include the following information."
Okay, so, right, just to be clear, the request is to modify the permit application.
Well, we are asking them why if
Well, not to modify the application, right, to, to modify the application to include additional piece of information.
Yes, and section 7.6, "at the discretion of the agency or its agent or when the proposed activity involves a significant impact, additional information based on the nature and anticipated effects of the activity, including but not limited to the following, is required." And there again, in G, "management practices and other measures, including LID practices, designed to mitigate or remediate the impact of the proposed activity or earlier non-permitted activities." So basically, in some, we are adding in, like I said, the definition of LID, and we're adding in, in two places that we're also including that in the information we'd like to receive from potential applicants.
Now, this request, just so it's clear, does not require that somebody have a low-impact development plan in place, just that if you have one, you need to provide the information. Is that what that's essentially stating? Because the other option is, I mean, all of those items, A through, you know, H, are those required issues for any application?
It's all including but not limited to, so yes, they pretty much, if, again, at the discretion of the agency or its agent, so if you or I were to feel that anything on here was necessary to obtain information on, we are permitted to get that information, and so now with this change, we would be permitted to get information regarding management practices and other measures, including LID, designed to mitigate or remediate the impact of the proposed activity or, or earlier non-permitted activities.
All right, I want to make this clearer too, because we go through this, we're gonna have to present it elsewhere, so.
No problem. This is going to, just so you, just so you know, this is going to dovetail with P and Z is currently looking at their regulations as well and are going to be looking at updates to the erosion and sedimentation control requirements in their regulations, and they're also going to be looking at adding stormwater management plan requirements for any development over, of an acre or greater, or where the disturbance is, is an acre or greater, so this is kind of dovetailing in with that, and again, this is all based on recommendations that were made to us from the council of governments that we're a member of, they had done an audit of the land use-related regulations for all the member towns in light of the changes made to the stormwater management permits issued by the state. And sent every, every town, you know, here's what we've observed, and, you know, none of it was from their end mandatory or anything, it was all here's recommendations of how you can be more in line with what's required under the stormwater management permit, so this fits in with that.
Okay, has there been any change to the draft model wetlands regulations from the state of Connecticut?
No.
To include this information?
No. I have been told that they are working on updating and providing a more current draft, but I've been told that for the past two years, so I'm not really sure when, if ever, that's that's coming out, I know that they're they're working on it, but we haven't seen anything. I can't imagine COVID's gonna help spread, speed anything up either.
No, okay, now the stormwater permit for the town of Thomaston.
Correct.
Who, who regulates and controls that?
There are certain things that are controlled, the bulk of it is, is going to be controlled by the, by the Board of Selectmen and, and Public Works is, has their section of things that they need to do. Among the things that were required were in this new permit were improvement of erosion and sedimentation controls during development and encouraging and requiring better management post-construction. So that's where our regs predominantly on the zoning and subdivision side were found to be maybe not having as much as, as they needed to have in there in terms of requirements for you know, plans and management tools that, you know, like the low-impact development, there was no mention at all in our regulations about any of that. So that's why most of the changes were going to be on their end, this is just a, a minor insert into the wetlands regulations in order to dovetail.
Is there any advantage to making a direct reference to the stormwater management plan such as activities need to be consistent with other, you know, other permits? You know, required in the town of Thomaston, or is it only this, you know, the LID that would be sufficient to?
Well, there is actually hang on one second. Other permits, here we go. Scrolled too far. There we go. And my apologies, this is not in red, but this is, this is part of it too. Section 18, other permits. It already says in here that nothing, this is already existing 18.1, "nothing in these regulations shall obviate the requirements for the applicant to obtain any other essence, permits, or licenses required by law or regulation by the town of Thomaston, the state of Connecticut, or the government of the United States," and it gives some examples. The 18.2 would be a new, it should be in red, and I apologize that it's not for clarity, but that would be a new section. "All projects with land disturbance of greater than or equal to five acres associated with construction activities shall be registered under the general permit for the discharge of stormwater and dewatering wastewater is associated with construction activities with the CTD EEP." And that is something else that we were required to add in per the stormwater management permit was a notice that they, that certain activities would have to be referred to DEP.
Okay, now is that a regulation of the CT DEEP?
That is a part of the stormwater management permit that we're, we're required to get it in.
Okay. Just want to make clear, you know, right, because the council of governments essentially is a nice, a nice-to-do organization, the state of Connecticut, DEP is a, you know, thou shall do.
Oh, understood, but
Right.
Again, there, you know, this was a grant that they were given where they were helping, you know, because of the size of the requirements of the new permit, they were helping people see what they needed to do in order to get compliant with the additions to the permit.
Yeah, I'm with that, I'm just trying to make it clear for the record that, you know, there's a, there's a difference between their recommendation and the, you know, CTD EEP.
Yes, correct.
Requirements, so this is a case of while it's not necessarily a stormwater, or I mean, a wetlands requirement, it's another regulation that overlays over the wetlands requirements through another permit-type structure. I think the dog is just I think the dog is just agreeing with me, but.
Hang on a minute, I'm sorry.
No. If it wasn't yours, it could have been mine. And for those of you that can read lips.
Interesting to me that you were able to hear him, so I mean, he was quite loud, but I theoretically had my headphones turned off. Oh, well.
I'm not worried about it. As I say, it could have been mine.
Oh, it's been that kind of a day. I apologize.
Okay. So just to, uh, just to reiterate, yeah, I wanted to be clear, you know, with everybody that there is that difference between an evaluation of a quasi-governmental agency versus a hard Connecticut deep requirement, and the one section of the Connecticut DEEP is overlaying its real, uh, regulations into the realm of wetlands. So it may not come straight down from the wetlands regulations, but they're coming out, coming at it from a different regulatory section of CTDEEP.
Yeah.
Okay. Comment, anything else that you're proposing at this point, or?
Um, those are really, I mean, aside from the other things, the minor other things that I, we had talked about a couple of months ago in terms of making reference to the official wetlands map, um, that's really it, that as far as pertains to the stormwater management, this is everything.
Uh, all of the blueprint that's in there, the light blue?
Those were just some areas that I was, uh, again, I, I think I picked up the wrong draft here, but, um.
No worries, just, but that.
Those were just some things that I had been looking at myself. Those, those aren't proposed, any proposed changes. Those are all existing. I just have them in blow.
Fair enough. I want to make it, again, I want to make it clear for everybody.
And I will give a clean copy that doesn't have all of this. I'll give it to you. Send it up to you.
Comments, questions from the commission? Commissioners, would you like to have a meeting to, or a month to chew on this and bring it up? For vote, or we? I mean, I'm good with that. And Stacy, we're not any, we're not up against any other, um,
There's no.
You know, deadline, there's no town meeting scheduled or anything like that?
No, there's nothing that you're, that would make this an urgency. No. So if you want, I can send out the clean copy, so perhaps it'll be a little bit less confusing, and then you guys can take a look and we can make a determination next month if you'd like. Or we can do it right now, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, hearing otherwise, I'd like to go the other month. It'll let everybody a chance to think of other questions, potentially. Okay. Something tells me we're not going to get 50, 60 applications in between now and then, so.
I think you're probably right.
I'll toss it back out there again to the rest of the commission members. Um, comments, questions at this point? Hearing none? Okay. Next order of business.
So. We're going to go. Why should anything work at this point? So, um, I just wanted, this is a compilation of my report that was ready for last month and some additions for things that have happened in the immediate past month. Um, so we already talked about the stormwater management permit. Um, these are the site inspections I've done over the past two months. Um, the, uh.
Nothing of any consequence?
Um, there's one or two things that, um, we may want to talk about a little bit later. And by the way, I do have something for executive session. Um, but, uh, this, this one particularly, this was an approved permit to, um, rebuild a house, and the house is, is rebuilt. Um, I did recently get the, um, the as-built. They had a, um, wetlands area at the back of the property and unfortunately, their machinery is straight into some of that area. Um, so I am, I have already spoken with them. I've taken pictures and everything. I've spoken with them about the, but where things are, and they're supposed to be putting together a plan for remediation, obviously. With a foot of snow on the ground, it was, you know, nothing was immediately going to be, uh, leaking into any other wetlands in the area. It's just simply that they disturbed the wetlands that were present on their property. So they're putting together a, um, you know, plan for restoration of the area because that wasn't detailed in what they were approved to do, because they weren't supposed to be back there to begin with. There was supposed to be silt fence, and there was silt fence, but then at some point it got taken down and the rest, as they say, is history. So, um, they are putting together that restoration plan for the back half of the property and, and I hope to hear from them within the next month.
Okay, great.
Um, the flooding concerns, I think, I can't recall if I discussed this with those who were here last month, but.
No, you didn't.
Okay. I have periodically been contacted by, um, members of the homeowners association and/or individual residents at Two Branch Road. Um, that is the, um, complex, uh, right next to the driveway into Chapman Lumber. And, um, they, between the two properties, there is a water course and it does, you know, with the, it does occasionally, the water level gets high, and unfortunately, the, the, some of the units are quite close to the water course. Um, and the concern has been the possibility for flooding um, with one of the residents who's in one of the units that's closest being very concerned. You know, obviously, rightly so, for, for his property. Uh, so there was a point at which we had a lot of snow on the ground and an additional, and a ton of rain was going to be coming in. Uh, so he was particularly concerned, um, with the possibility for flooding. Um, we had a lot of conversations back and forth with the public works and with the homeowners association, and ultimately, they used the existing snow to make a berm. And they, they got through that, okay. Um, but they were, the homeowners association is aware that this is a, a situation that needs to be looked at a little, you know, more thoroughly than just, you know, a temporary snow berm. So I had contacted Cynthia Rabenowitz from Northwest Conservation District. She walked the site and provided a brief report. Um, and really, she kind of echoed what I was, what I was afraid the answer was going to be is there's not a ton of options. The, um, the houses are so close, you know, to the, to the wetlands area, and I can pull up a map if you want to see it, that really the only solution is, is a more permanent berm um, built up in, in between the houses and the water course. Um, the, the homeowners association is aware that any activities like that would require some level of permitting in order to be able to do it, but because of the terrain, I mean, it's very flat between where the water course area is and where the houses are. It's, you know, it's, and the, the short distance between the two, there's really, the options are very limited and, um, they're going to need to do something, is basically what it comes down to.
They're going to put together a plan then?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, 206 Atwood, uh, this was the one where there had been a, um, some sort of shed, large shed structure that was built out in the middle of the property in the wetlands area and, and may have been in a, a zoning setback. Um, long and short of it, the property is, is being sold to an adjacent neighbor. Um, and I had been contacted by their attorney who found my letter on the land records and asked what needed to be done in order to resolve everything. So we had walked the site. I showed him where things were that needed to be resolved. Um, and he was going to deal with the current property owner and then get back to me. And, um, within the past month, he has gotten back to me and said that, uh, he has been advised that everything has been removed um, and that I can go out and inspect at any time. So obviously, I'm waiting for, again, the snowmelt because the foundation, you know, it would not necessarily be easy to see that they removed the foundation, um, for the, for the shed structure, because it was sonotubes into the ground. So, um, once I can get out there and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's mushy. So once I can get out there, then I'm going to, and assuming everything's been removed, then this, I can do a follow-up letter on the land records, and this matter can be closed out. So that's that. Um, we can talk about this one in executive session. Um, there are no other agent approvals. The only thing that you should be aware of is that 60 Hill Road, that's the, um, uh, Sweet Pete, um, where they convert horse manure into mulch.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he contacted me. He's looking to add an area to do leaf mulch to his existing site plan. Um, it is a slight encroachment, very slight encroachment into the upland review area. Most everything he's doing is outside of the upland review area, so if he adds this in, he's in encroaching by approximately 10, 15 feet into the upland review area. Um, so that's, he's going to be getting, um, an updated site plan to me to show, I mean, I did walk the site with him. I am aware where he's hoping to do this, but he was going to get me an updated, uh, site plan, just so we have something on record for officially where this is going and.
Okay.
Sort of information. Um, let's see. Other than that, um, we're still kind of in the, unfortunately, in a holding pattern, the sustainable CT. Um, the Nogatuck River Greenway, um, there had been this meeting back in December. Um, they, basically because they're ever on the lookout for grant funding for, for these projects, they like to have a list at the ready of their priority portions of the trail. So they had done that back in 2015. Um, they wanted to do it again, and that's what we did in the December meeting, and, um, certain priorities were recommended, and they're not directly in Thomaston, but they are directly adjacent, um, on, on either side. Um, priority, priorities being, uh, the linkage from Watertown and an adjacent section of pit, of trail just over in the Harwinton, you know, just, just over into Harwinton. So, um, that's the only update to bring there, and there haven't been any other applications where conservation easements were present, so there's nothing for you guys to, to look at that way.
Thank you.
And let's see. Let me share, I'll go back to the agenda. And so, um, there are some items to discuss in executive session if you wanted to, to do that.
Okay, um, let me see, do we have a motion to go into executive session, including, uh, the we-o-n on that session? For purposes of discussing, uh, legal issues associated with, um, 280's Reynolds Bridge Road?
This is Tony Semela, so moved.
Laura Fitch.
Claude. Seconded, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay. Give me a second, and I'm pausing the recording.